So again, I want to welcome you to the Central School Board meeting for the month of May. And comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please file out a comment card and turn it into the Board Secretary or the Board Chair, these nice little yellow papers. Turn it into the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the district office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review and issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, if so the Avenue would is preferred. And once again, thank you for your attendance at this meeting in the Central School Board. And with that, we're down to adoption of the agenda.
No changes on the agenda?
No changes on the agenda. So that brings us to Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes, so as we begin, I want to, as we do every year, it's that time of year to show our appreciation to our teachers. So I'm going to read right now for this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students, whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community services, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that the Central School District 13J Board of Directors proclaim May 6th through 10th, 2019 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Central School District 13J Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this sixth day of May, and then again, this will be signed by Mr. Moser and myself. So again, just thank you all. I appreciate each and every one of you. We work as a team together, all of us collectively, and this week is about you, and we look forward to celebrating that with you throughout the week. So thank you.[168.01][168.01][applause]
So now, it's down to communications from the floor.
Reports for student reports.
Yes, it does. Says student reports and recognition, so we'll start with the Power Peers.
Hi, I have a short Power Peer presentation today. For last month, we did our empathy campaign, and we really wanted to make it more of a visual campaign. So we decided to put a display case in the very front office that our theme was Walk in Their Shoes, so we put the definition of empathy and a bunch of different shoes, and we made a library display of, it says like Walk in Their Shoes, and it's a bunch of different books about people from different backgrounds that students can go and check out from the school. We also had a video that went out to all the Power Peer classes, and it went along with little shoe prints where it said, "If you were to walk in my shoes, you would know," and the students were filling them out anonymously, and later, we're going to make a video of the stories. And we decided that we wanted to show you guys the video after my presentation. It's kind of a lengthy one, but I think it's really worth a watch. Moshe Martinez put it together, and it's really good. But also that we did this month, we had a Yak Summit for Youth Advisory Committee, and we just got to interact with a bunch of different youth advisory committees and what they're doing in their projects that better their health and wellness center, and we got a lot of interesting ideas for next year's projects. And that's about all we've done this month. But I really hope that you guys enjoy our empathy video. I think it's a really good one.
Okay, so once again, you guys are amazing. And how about Asbeck?
We had a spring fling week last week, and we had some assemblies and activities after school. And one of the activities that we did was during school, the whole time during school on Tuesday, which was blood drive. And for blood drive, we got 61 units of blood. That allowed us to give $1,000 of scholarship to senior leadership kids. We are partnered with Power Peers and multicultural leadership to make sure our staff and teachers know that we appreciate them. The theme is Hawaiian, and we are having a thank you note station. We're having a coffee and school supplies provided by Admin and distributed by us. We're giving Panther gear. We're having a Tuesday breakfast and update slash cleanup for staff room. Senior class council is getting ready for their barbecue at the end of the year, and later this month, May 28th, we will be having freshman tours, and we're preparing for that and their freshman barbecue.
Okay, now we're down to comments from the floor. Julie LaMester, you are up.
Am I supposed to state who I am?
Your name and where you live.
Okay. I'm Julie LaMester, and I am a resident here in Monmouth. And I would first like to say, am I okay to the mic here? I would first like to say that I greatly appreciate the service of all of you and all the work that you do on behalf of the students in our community. And to any teachers in the room behind me, I share my heartfelt thanks for everything that you do for our students. I am the parent of a 10th grader and an 8th grader who have been students in this district since their kindergarten years, and I try to remain informed about the challenges and successes occurring in our district. And I am here tonight in response to learning about the current lack of candidates running for school board positions in the upcoming election. I was surprised to learn this, and I'm wondering if there may be some simple solutions to promote greater community engagement in future elections. I notice in some of our surrounding communities that there are multiple candidates for most open school board positions. And a review of the school district websites for those areas revealed to me that there was information about upcoming school board elections posted early in 2019. And it seems to me that there would be many avenues to share similar information within our community. So I'm interested in knowing what steps the district envisions taking in the future to encourage robust and more inclusive participation in the school board election process. And additionally, I'm curious to know how the district and the school board intend to address the potential that there may be at least one open position following the upcoming election. My understanding of the available district policy is that there would be an advertisement for a potential open position. So I'm interested in knowing where that would be advertised and how that would be communicated to the community at large. And finally, I'm curious about the process for appointing an eligible resident to a vacant position once applicants were identified. I realize you may not have all of the answers to these questions at this moment, and I will leave some written comments in these questions for follow-up. And again, I truly value the commitment that you have made to our students, and I look forward to ongoing improvements in communication to enhance community involvement on behalf of our students. Thank you.
So I want to start by saying again, mine was an error on my part. I looked at the board policy, and I looked at the wrong board position. So that was a total screw-up on my part. I looked at the board policy, and I read the year for Peggy's, and I thought I was good. And in fact, I was totally in shock when she called me, and she goes, "You didn't, you didn't register?" And I go, "What? No, I'm good." She goes, "No, you're not." And Darcy also missed the cutoff, and she intended to run.
And I think we need to be careful and regard to how we share information right now. So we appreciate the comments, and we will follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you for your time. So we're up to CEA.
Hello, I'm Chris Jordan, the building rep for CEA at the high school. And in the spring, the high school has a ton of things going on, and almost every teacher wanted me to be sure that I included their thing. So the, as you heard Asbeck say, we just concluded our spring fling week. The academic decathlon team went to Minnesota recently and competed in Nationals, and Taylor Brucelo earned a silver in the essay category. Students will be working with Western Oregon University's Broadcasting Department to live-record graduation this year. On April 12th, we held the annual physics egg drop, egg extravaganza. I practiced that, too. Egg extravaganza, where the Polk County Fire District Number One, which is our station, brought out their ladder trucks to drop the physics students' egg landers. It was a smashing success. The students in-
I thought four survived. I heard a rumor, four survived.
There's a video, but I couldn't, I'll do videos next time, Kendra. The students in Mr. Gorman's creative writing class have been writing poetry, which is being engraved into blocks of wood using a laser engraver and other supplies he received as part of a public-private partnership grant from two local businesses, Oregon State Credit Union and Not a Pipe Publishing. Once the blocks are stained and lacquered, they will be framed as a public art project. It's exciting opportunity for our students to have their writing memorialized and displayed publicly. The central high teachers are working on avid strategies specifically to strengthen student collaboration. The avid site team hosted observers to see ways they are utilizing avid strategies to encourage students to talk and work with each other about content. They were also looking for wicker strategies and the culture of college and career readiness. Horticulture classes put together an amazing plant sale. We have already raised over $8,000 to reinvest into our program and work on the second greenhouse at the high school. Thanks to all who came and supported us by purchasing plants, it's a long and intensive process, and the greenhouse truly is a student-run and student-produced operation. Vet science students are winding down their units on animal disease prevention and medicine administration, thanks to the help of several live animals who donated their time in exchange for the love and affection from our kids. Welding and shop both purchased new and exciting equipment this year, which they have spent many hours getting up and running and teaching students to use. It has been a long process, but will provide many new opportunities for students to create industry-level pieces of work. They already have future business opportunities in building specialty washers for a equipment supply company in Southern Oregon, and are looking to expand into creating awards and plaques with the wood shop equipment. FFA students have been outstanding. 14 students are exhibiting animals at the Polk County Fair or State Fair with their SAE projects. These are long-term commitment explorations in animal care, nutrition, and market quality. The annual FFA banquet is coming up, May 14th, and all are welcome to attend and congratulate their hard work in the 12, more than 12 contests they competed in this year. Lynn Thomas spearheaded hosting two major FFA state contests in our high school, along with one sectional level contest and three district level contests, and they've been very busy and are lucky to have a school and district that supports us in providing the space and time to give these learning opportunities to kids across the state. These contests bring industry standards and innovations to life and encourage exploration into a broad scope of vocational fields. Thank you for the support in this arena. Our state testing is in full swing. We have finished our ELPA testing. We're almost done with our ELA testing, and math and science are coming up at the end of the month. There was a successful prom that I thought Asbeck was going to talk about more, so that's all I put. The MCL Cultural Leadership Club has been the biggest club this year at Central with 84 members. The club promotes leadership, higher education for students, field trips to colleges, universities, and community service. They are volunteering with the City of Independence and help at the elementary schools with beach cleanups. They have had a total of nine colleges and universities come and visit Central to promote higher education, and have hosted the first family posada night with a total of 256 attendees. The event was open to all the community to promote cultural awareness, at the same time, bridge our Anglo and Latino communities together. This was a total success. If you add all the MCL members' hours together, they sum over 900 hours of community service hours this school year. Out of the 20 Caesar Chavez Leadership Scholarships given out statewide, five of them went to Central MCL seniors. MCL will be hosting its first Latino success partnership with the help of the district and central administrators. This will be an event that educates families about graduation, and the goal is to focus on high school dropout prevention. Avid 11 is working on a service learning project where groups are researching a local problem, making a poster about why the problem needs to be solved, and then present to one another and vote on the problem they think needs to be addressed the most urgently. They will then research how to solve that problem and make a proposal. Their senior year's Avid experience will include working on actually solving that local problem that they've identified. The kinds of problems they are currently researching are homelessness, lack of quality daycare, inconsistent grading schemes at CHS, flooding and substance abuse in minors. The high school, and this class in particular, the Avid 11 class, are also working through the loss of their dear friend, Navea Ferguson. Members of Avid plan to candlelight vigil, have been helpful with fundraising efforts for Navea's family, and have been incredibly supportive of each other. Those are some of the wonderful things that are happening right now at CHS. Thank you very much.
Now, OSEA. No, Denise, you're shaking your head. Okay? So that means we're down to CEES.
Thank you. Very easy one tonight, because the only thing in the finance report is the budget-to-actual that was in your packet as of March 31st, 2019, and it's the same one we saw at the Budget Committee meeting that was held earlier in April. So there's nothing new to report from that. Unless you all took it home and really dug into it and have questions.
Question two. On this one right here.
You want to know why? So nope, that's all I have for you this evening until we get to the action items.
Well, that was pretty simple.
Right?
All right, so now it says transportation report?
No, we do not have a transportation report this time.
No, nothing this evening.
Nope. Okay. So then, we're down to you.
Yes, and we're getting down to the point with policies that it's going to go slower than we have gone in the past. There are a handful that will probably need to both go to our students because several of them are affected by our students as well as our staff, so we'll continue to work through those processes. We're, as I said, over 150 updates, and we have, and Director Mann, correct me if I'm wrong, I think- wrong, I think I said 22 left, so after this round, we'll be down to 20. And again, it may take us some time, just because there are some major shifts. So the two that we have today, the first one is IIA, which is under instruction, focused on instructional resources and instructional materials. This is actually just minor changes to the board policy on the process of how we go about selecting basic instructional materials. I think one of the key items in this is additions tied to the availability of online resources. You have heard me talk a little bit about that as we look at adoptions of curriculum, textbook versus online, as well as when we do adopt curriculum, the durability of it. Again, you're seeing more companies go to that online or a combination of textbook-online. Part of that is to have curriculum be at a little bit more reasonable pricing. So, again, you'll see some of those minor changes in the instruction. The other one is JFCF for students, and it is hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying, teen dating violence, or domestic violence. Some major- or the major change to this is the new definition for domestic violence that is in there. There's also clarity of the reporting process, and we will do some training with staff as we begin next year and what that looks like. Again, we are doing a good job of reporting, but it's just that reminder of what we're responsible for. And then, obviously, annual notices in the handbooks and making sure that is posted there as well as in the school. So there will be a few changes you'll see in regards to that. There is some minor language changes in that as well. So those are the two policy updates for my superintendent report. I have two other items just to share in my report. I am requesting that on- we actually, because of what's going on in the legislature, we will probably- we're estimating that we're going to need an additional budget hearing and potential board meeting, and so we believe that that is going to be necessary in June. I'd like to propose a board meeting on Monday, June 24th. We have that day already scheduled as one of our retreats on that day, and so I would like to propose potentially the retreat in the afternoon from about probably 1:00 to 5:30, take a break, and then we would have a board budget hearing at 6:00 PM, followed by a board meeting at probably around 6:15, 6:30. This is going to allow us flexibility to adjust the budget as those changes continue during the legislative session, and we do believe it will, as we every day have a new number, we are going to continue to need to work through that. So I just wanted to check with everyone to see if that is a possibility on the 24th. Again, shifting our retreat to the afternoon and then moving into a budget hearing at 6:00, and then a board meeting to approve a final budget at 6:30. So you're a no.
One no.
Yeah. One to 5:30-ish, probably take a break, and then go 6:00 and 6:30.
This is the 24th?
24th.
Board meeting would be pretty simple.
With just a few, couple of business, it would be limited. Board meeting with a couple of business agenda items just to approve, adopt the budget, potentially also to award a bid. We're going out to bids.
What, no?
I'll go a yes on that.
Okay.
So you're okay. Does anybody else have an issue?
I have to look.
Okay. Okay. So we'll do that as tentative, and hopefully that if we- obviously, we want to make sure we have a quorum. If we do not, then we will come back to you guys probably in a Friday report for a potential date change.
Okay.
And then the last one is really, and I just am excited to publicly share this. So this week, we are doing some final edits for sharing the high school student application process for the student board representatives for the 2019-20 school year. The Central High School students have developed this, the entire application process throughout the second half of this year. It's taking us some time, as I look at a couple of the young people that have been helping in moving that forward with me, because again, I know that is something that you guys have shared with me that is of interest in adding to our board. What I would like, again, those will close probably towards the end of probably the third week or beginning of the fourth week of May. What I would like is to have a committee of board members, no more than three, so we don't have a quorum, to do a review. I do think we're going to get a handful of students, and so I would like to be able to do a review and then potentially move three to four students forward to an actual interview with three additional board members. It could be a mix of those same ones for us to interview, because they would come on the board in the 1920 school year. So I just want to- I want to publicly share and say thank you to all the youth and students at the high school who have worked diligently with me editing and, you know, asking and figuring out what questions we want to make sure that people understand, the commitment that this is and how their voices will be heard in this process. Again, they're not voting members, but they will be obviously a part of our process in being able to share information from that perspective. So I do want to offer that to you. If you are interested, I will put that also in the Friday report as we look towards those dates of when we might do the committee and then do final interviews for moving into the 1920 school year.
So you don't have a date at this point?
No, I want to just, because this is our first time, we're being- we have a system that's flexible, because again, if we want to extend the time, although we have a good plan in place of how we're going to reach out from a communication standpoint, so that's our next step going out this week to specific groups, but then other ways that we're going to work with the administration at the high school to share that information with students.
Okay. Any questions for Jennifer?
That's it for my report.
Just a clarification question on that policy. Were you indicating that the second policy was to be worked on more yet, or were you just talking about in general, the ones that are coming up will need more work?
The ones coming up will need more work. They're specific to really the impacts on staff and/or students, and so since I have been here, it's very important to me, not that the policies that we haven't- don't affect, but it truly is in the day-to-day application of those policies, and so it's important for me that we get feedback from the people that it's going to affect the most. So we'll start working through those policies as quickly as possible.
But these two will go on next time?
Yeah, they'll go into the consent agenda, yes, unless there's concerns.
No other questions? So, in the board report, upcoming activities, our next Budget Committee meeting is on the 20th at 6:00. And we just spoke about the board budget- board meeting budget hearing is June 5th at 6:00 PM, but there might be a change, potentially.
No, we're probably going to do, again, it is every few days, gives me a different number.
Right.
So again, we are just wanting to be prepared that we can make the best decisions. We are constantly getting feedback and input from our principals. We have another one tomorrow with them based off the new information that we have. So we do believe we're going to, on May 20th, give you information, and there may be the new information on June 3rd. And then we also believe we want to have that June 24th as a potential if there is another shift or information in regards to that. So just putting us in a place where we have to make adjustments, that we have the ability to do that and not, you know, have to push it out after, because we really would- really would- well, we need to have it in place by June 30th.
Yeah, by law.
By law.
June 30th, board meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be prepared to have the budget hearing at that.
And so graduation is on the 7th of June, and the board retreat, be aware that we'll be looking for potential changes, so we got to be flexible on the next month or so.
Yeah.
So, and that puts us down to administrative reports and puts us looking for something from Alicia and Dr. Vickery.
Yeah, so as they come up, I'm going to share a little bit of background of how we've gotten here. So really, this work, the presentation, it's been really going for almost a year now. The State Board of Education each year adopts rules that affect K through 12. Each year, districts must complete by February 1st the districts- how the district's standing with respect to all standards for both public, elementary, and secondary schools. This is referred to as Division 22 Assurance of Compliance. And so again, we do that every year. This year, Jason Clark was here and presented the information to the board. Items in the Division 22 Assurance include, but are not limited to, our diploma requirements, curriculum, career education, counseling, assessment, emergency plans, health services, required instructional time, and again, those are just a few to give you an idea of what Division 22 really covers. For the past two years, Central School District has been out of compliance under Oregon Administrative Rule 581-022-2059, human sexuality education. This information I also shared with you, with the board, in our April 12th Friday report, which was under the Teaching and Learning section. With that, I want to turn the presentation over to Dr. Dory Vickery, who's our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Alicia Bowen, who is our Health and Physical Education teacher from Talmadge Middle School. So ladies, all yours.
All right. Well, good evening. We're here just to give an overview of this project, and I must say, I'm quite thankful to Alicia for taking this on. Couple of years ago, when Senate Bill 856, Aaron's Law, went into effect, I had some teachers asking me about the mandatory lessons and the curriculum and getting that alignment in, and it was just something that we really needed to tackle. And so Alicia really took this project on. So I'm just going to talk just a little bit more about Division 22. As Dr. Kubista said, we've got a- we have to come up with a comprehensive plan of instruction. This is a requirement by law, and this is all about prevention. It also has to align with the 2016 Oregon health standards. Additionally, any parent may request that his or her child be excused from the portion of the instruction, and local school boards, this is in the OAR, will approve the plan and require that it be reviewed and updated. The other components that are listed in some more background information about this OAR, it links up an Oregon Healthy Teen Relationship Act from 2013 and was modified in 2015. And that act requires schools to incorporate age-appropriate education into new or existing training programs, grade seven through 12, about teen dating, violence, and domestic violence. Then, more recently, we go into Aaron's Law, and then, like I said earlier, that's Senate Bill 856 that went into act in 2015. So Oregon Department of Ed, through the Division 22 requirement, has taken the Healthy Teen Relationship Act and Aaron's Law and come up with the requirement that we have to have a human sexuality comprehensive plan in place aligned to the 2016 health standards. And Oregon's benchmark standards, the 2016, they support health, well-being, and safety for our students. And again, this is about being proactive and in teaching our students how to advocate and to be safe.
So I had the honor of working with a team that was made up of parents and teachers within our district. I just wanted to mention their names really quickly. We had Brandy Humphries, Catherine Janista, Alicia Bowen, myself, Meg Grainer, Breon Flesh, Dory Vickery, and then Torn Palfrey. Recently, at our last meeting, we invited our middle school and high schools. We have Sheri Higgins at the middle school level and Chris Jordan at the high school level that'll be helping to expand it beyond K5. We first started our meetings in September 19th of 2018. We met about once a month. However, as we started meeting, there were times where we had to meet a couple times a month because we realized the workload was a lot. We were just told basically that we needed to make sure all of our work was geared towards making sure those standards were met, along with making sure we were hitting on the Aaron's Law lessons. So we, as a team, tried really hard to make sure that those were all infused together, so it didn't add more work to a teacher's plate, but everything was covered comprehensively. Essentially, all the lessons that we've worked on so far, K5, have put us into compliance or will put us into compliance as we continue our work. In the future, we would like to increase our team to include more parents, medical professionals, as well as community resources. So as our team continues to work through the standards, then we'll work to enhancing our team a little bit more in that respect. So the next slide talks about the scope of our work. We really made sure our driving force was that we were going to have lots of parent communication. We felt with this sensitive topic, that was going to be extremely important within our district. And then we've also started talking about the cultural sensitivity, which we'll talk more about as we progress. The resources that we've used, we've tried first and foremost, K5, to use the Great Body Shop, which was the board-adopted text. However, it hasn't covered everything, so we've also had to include the three Rs in welcomingschools.org, just to help fill in any gaps that the textbook was kind of missing to hit those standards. As Dory mentioned, the standards have been updated. This happened to be a little bit of a shift or a surprise to some of our teaching professionals in that they shifted a lot of the stuff that were taught at later grades, like grades four and five, they've now shifted up to grades three. And so that came as a little bit of a shock to a lot of people, and so our team has been working really hard to develop resources and make sure that all of the curriculum and documents that we hand out to teachers are things that are very beneficial, that they can move forward, as well as communicating to parents. We do hit on vocabulary. We tried extremely hard to hit on the academic health language. We spent a lot of time on this document and going through each lesson that was taught at each grade level, and so we broke our vocabulary sheet down grade-level specific. So at each grade level, as certain topics come up, we introduce those vocabulary words. And again, we tried using the best academic health language we could that allowed teachers and parents to communicate about the sensitive topics that their children will be introduced As far as the instructional components, like I said, we tried using Great Body Shop as much as possible. In going through all of the standards, there are a ton of standards, so we had to go through and pick specifically which ones were relevant to the sex education. We tried to make sure that those lessons were infused with Aaron's Law lessons, again, to keep the workload down with the teachers, but to make sure that the kids were being exposed to everything they need to keep them safe here at school. We developed a scope and sequence, which we have each grade level, and we decided to break it down to show teachers the progression. So through each topic that they're teaching, they can see as it develops K5, the different skills and resources that kids are exposed to. So it kind of made that a valuable resource to us. And then, as I mentioned, we had our vocabulary list as well. So next steps for our K5 portion, we met and reviewed feedback from the professional development that we had with our elementary staff. We found out that there was a lot of stuff that we still need to take back and work on as a team. We went through our support lot, and we did a lot of reflection on questions and comments that teachers had, and so we're taking some of that back to work through it. And then we've provided Dory with some stuff to take forward as well. Parent letters was a huge concern amongst all teachers at the professional development, and the general consensus at this point is that we need to rework our parent level- parent letters and perhaps make it so that there's grade-level bans. So for example, K2 might have their own separate letter, and then 35 might have their own, and then of course, going on, middle school would have their own and high school would have. So we'd have like banned-level parent letters to meet the needs. So we started working through middle and high school standards to really get that full vertical alignment, and then we're just going to be discussing and revising the plans to make sure that we're also culturally inclusive all throughout this journey. I'm almost done. So our K12 comprehensive plan, then, we're going to be moving forward. We're working, like I said, through the alignment of all the standards. We're trying really hard to keep one general format and then allowing it to vertically align throughout so that it's easy for parents to use as a resource. We are going to continue to review curriculum and seek resources where we need them, and then, of course, our parent letters. I do just want to point out that we have worked hard to make sure the parent letters have been translated both English and Spanish, and then it reflects any feedback that we've gotten from our teaching professionals along the way. Any questions?
So you're working hard on the K5, and then now we're looking at the middle school and the high school.
Yes.
So is your plan to have the whole process reviewed biannually on a- So, is your plan to have the whole process reviewed biannually on it together? Or are you going to stagger it and do K5 and then middle and high?
Yeah, we'll combine this into one comprehensive plan that we bring back. So, I felt it was important just to start with the K5 because of the importance of Aaron's Law and the sensitivity with parents. We typically, in this district, for years, have taught human growth and development at fifth grade. And that has changed with the 2016 standards and the requirements under Aaron's Law. So, thanks to this committee, we're able to hand the teachers, all right, here are your four or five lessons that meet the Aaron Law requirement, but we need to provide more training, and this is ongoing. So, that was the work for this year. So, we know it's just going to continue next year as we go into K12. I'm going to also say Hillsborough was... Beaverton? Beaverton. Beaverton was a step ahead of us and did this last year and had a ton of really, really good resources that the team was able to pull from. So, I did, and I reached out to a couple of other districts just to find out, hey, how are you doing this work? It is a sensitive topic, and it is important that we keep in mind that we are being preventative in how we teach our children to self-advocate, to speak up to a safe adult, but that we also want to support our teachers in moving forward.
Are the lesson plans themselves something that the board should look at? Because I'm trying to get a sense of how sensitive these lessons are. And if I were approached by somebody in the public whose child went through one of these, I wouldn't know. I mean, I understand, and it sounds like a great process you've been through, but I'm just wondering if either we should look at them or have a synopsis of them?
So, we can give you in a Friday Report where we are right now. I think this, again, I'm going to say it, this is a work in progress. I think that we've gone out, obviously, with the committee first and foremost in laying the foundations and then getting feedback from our teachers and our principals in that process. There's a lot of feedback that we received that we're working through right now. And so, I think as they go through that and make the changes, absolutely, we can, in a Friday Report to the board, or if we want to bring them back to have that conversation as potentially in July or August, especially as we move towards the fall, I think we can do that. Again, I just know because of the feedback that they've received, I want them and to give them some time to be able to go back in and make those adjustments based off of the feedback. That's, again, in this process that we're trying to develop across the district. When we are doing adoptions or looking at standards, that it is a back-and-forth and that we're having good, not only community, but our staff get voice in that as well because, obviously, they're the ones that are going to do the day-to-day teaching with that. So, absolutely, we will, when I believe we are at a place that we think that this is going to be the direction. I think it's very important, we talk a lot about academic language, but we don't spend a lot of time talking about health academic language. And so, again, that is a major shift that you are going to see in the approach with this. I have lots, I have the opportunity to get to speak to our law enforcement a lot, and conversations tied to sexual abuse, physical abuse is a concern in our community still. And so, again, this is going to help us continue to align to how, if and when, and I hope that that never happens for any of our students, but if and when they are in a situation, both either physically or sexually, where they could be in trouble, that they have the skills and the language to be able to go to an adult. And that's really, as Dr. Vickery and Ms. Bowen said, is the approach of that prevention and proactive approach that we're having to do because of some things that are happening to kids still by adults. And so, yes, Steve, we will make sure that we get you guys copies of that so you guys can see that.
What are the sensitive topics? So, you just mentioned being able to identify sexual harassment, and I'm gathering that that's somehow a lesson now in our elementary schools.
It will be, yes.
What are the topics at different grade levels that we need to be aware of that you're referencing as sensitive?
Do you want to take that one?
You want to do it, or go ahead?
Well, adults here, we can talk.
Well, lots of preventative care as far as forms of contraception that could be used. Form and function is introduced as early as third grade, now with the new 2016 standards, ranging everything from gender and orientation. So, lots of different sensitive topics throughout the human sexuality standards.
And up until now, that's been something we would introduce at the fifth grade?
Or sixth or seventh.
Or sixth or seventh. So, we're going all the way down to the third grade?
Yes.
Well, it's really K5. And again, that's partly what the committee is working through of looking at the standards and making sure that they're aligned and that the key ones that we feel are important. We're going to talk a lot about when we look at standards, you know, the key standards that are going to help us do what we need to do to give students the knowledge that they need. And again, whether that's health or talking about literacy, all of that becomes part of that. What are the key standards that we need to focus on to give students the proper knowledge and learning so that they can be successful, preventative, proactive, should they be in those types of situations?
Maybe this would be a good PLC topic.
Yeah, when we get to that point, absolutely. We can do that probably in August, even at our retreat to go over, because we will probably by that time be pretty close with where we are and what that will look like as we go towards the fall.
One more thing I did forget to mention earlier. We've talked about having the materials available for parents, and not at a curriculum night or an open house, but actually in the timeline of the letter to say, this material is available for you to come in to a quiet place at the school that we can try to find where they can take a look at the lessons themselves. And they can determine then what's best for their son or daughter and whether or not they would want to withdraw them from that instruction. But that is something that we really, we will be setting up in our process and clearly explaining in the parent letters as well.
They have been very thoughtful in that. I think the feedback that they've received from the teachers and the committee has worked extremely hard of making sure that we are transparent, and again, I'm going to always say this, transparent with what we are doing, being able to have those pieces if parents want to come in. Again, I think that's a work in progress of where they come, whether it's here or are we going to give it at each of the schools, because sometimes, parents feel more comfortable going in their school to receive that information. And again, I know the committee's still working through that, but that transparency in the letter to parents so that they understand what this is going to look like. And again, there is always the option. If they choose not to, they can opt their student out of those lessons. But again, I think that we're going to continue to work through that to make sure that the information is, and again, we will give, when we are to that point, make sure you guys have that ability to see it all and ask any other questions. Again, this is a first step. We wanted to get it in front of you as we continue down this road.
I guess I would just add to Steve's concern is that as this rolls out, we get more and more questions, and the more information we can have to be supportive, the better off we'll be, because otherwise, we're sort of blindsided with, did you know that they're teaching this in the kindergarten? And it's like, well, not actually. I'm on the school board, but I didn't know. And we have rolled it out because we've done, we've taught the body shop for a year now. And then, did we go all the way down to kindergarten or not?
We have been, but now, it is specifically to Aaron's Law and sexual abuse prevention. But also, we're going to be updating our Great Body Shop curriculum to align with the more recent version, aligns with the 2016 Health Standards.
So, I guess I just would echo Steve's comment that it would be really good to see what's actually happening in the classroom effectively. And I'd rather do that sooner than later, so the retreat would be a good time to do that.
Yep. And then, I'm just going to say, April 12, I would ask you to go to your Friday Reports and keep April 12 in your hand from now through as we get to the beginning of the year, and we will continue to add to that. But that is where we gave a lot of information specifically about the laws, specifically about the OAR tied to Division 22 and some of the processes that we have. So, again, I will, and I can re-put that in this Friday's report as well, just as additional information.
And again, I'll just say, I think we're all comfortable with the process that we went through and sort of where the laws stand, but when we're handed a, you know this is what's being taught in kindergarten, it would be nice to have heard that for the first time from Dory and her.
Absolutely.
I think we have some incredible parents that are on our committee as well that have really worked hard to make sure all the documents that we have been creating are really simple and laid out, and again, show that transgression of like everything that's going to happen at each grade level. So, I think once those documents, they're in draft form, once they're kind of finalized, I think you'll see that it'll make it pretty clear.
So, moving on.
Thank you, ladies.
And would you guys remember to thank everybody that is helping with that?
Sure.
Okay.
There's three right here.
So, we're down to the consent agenda. So, you have it in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And so, we're down to a presentation about the food service pricing, correct?
Right, that's correct. So, Alex Singer will join us here for this. And as included in the description in your board packet, a little reminder of sort of the process that we are required to go through. We are required to do a pricing test to determine whether or not we are charging enough for paid meals. And the reason for that is we do get the reimbursement from the USDA for meals that we serve to students, and they want to make sure that we are not subsidizing our entire operation with their very generous reimbursement, which clearly, they're not, we're not. But the exercise still pertains, and we have to go through that each year. Last year, we did it, and we recommended a couple of options for price increases. You opted to increase prices by 10 cents. And at the time, we sort of knew that would get us through this year. But the continual range that we have to review led us to look at it again. And again, we are under the required price, the average weighted price that the USDA requires us to charge. And so, Alex can explain a few more details and answer questions as we look at how to increase again this year to remain compliant.
Hello? Do you have any questions to start with? Okay. Yes, last year, we decided to go up the minimal amount to reduce the sticker shock, for lack of a better term, knowing that we would have to raise again this year. I had a few recommendations to increase by the 10-cent minimum again. We do have an option to raise more than that if you so choose. Our student prices, I have two pages for you. Our weighted average previously was 263, and we've increased it now to 273. The target for last year was 292. It has not been released yet this year, but it will be eventually. They're running behind, they say, because of the shutdown. But we will be required to go up that amount, and we decided to come to a little earlier to coincide with the budget. So, it'd be talking about the same things at the same time instead of coming after the budget was done. My recommendation had been to increase 10 cents like we did last year. That will put us on the progression to catch up to the required weighted average, and it meets the minimum of 10 cents that needs to be raised, assuming you want to stay with the same thought of minimal increase to lessen the impact on the students and the families.
And then, as a reminder, part of the reason for not coming to recommend the bigger increase, because again, this doesn't even get us exactly to where we need to be, we just need to show good faith that we're moving there. And part of the reason we're not recommending a higher increase is because of the current legislation pending as part of the Students Success Act, which would, again, provide state funding to subsidize the difference between federal reimbursement and what we provide or what we have for students. If that is funded at the levels that are expected, we may have universal or nearly universal meals for students, meaning that we may not have to charge at all. But until we know more about where that's going, we need to make a decision for the coming year.
Just to help me refresh my memory here, this only, this doesn't have any impact on pre-early lunch reimbursements?
Correct. This is just...
For people that are actually paying for the meals. And our discussion last year was sort of the difference between we need to get caught up with where it's supposed to be, and we were adequately recovering our costs, and so why be in a big rush to do that? I guess the thing that's changed this year is we're not adequately recovering our costs. So, that would be the only input to increase it more than 10 cents. Is that a fair statement? Do we feel like we would do anything significant to impact our financial picture by increasing it by more than 10 cents?
I guess the trade-off, right, of charging more and people aren't currently paying what we do charge, so you increase it more, that's less they're not paying. So, that's a trade-off. And again, this is absolutely uncharted territory for us. You're right. We don't have an idea of what that curve would be, at what point increasing the price makes enough to cover people who aren't going to pay.
And we do have plenty of families and students that are paying, but for the segment that isn't or can't, it is definitely, it is dragging us down in that regard.
So, I move that we increase the costs on the student lunch by 10 cents and on the adult lunch by 10 cents. Do I have to do separate motions or do that together?
You can do it together.
I'll second. Discussion, do we need to put the year on the motion like is written on the back here for us as the example of the motion?
Sorry, I didn't read that for a minute. How about I restate my motion to increase the price of paid student lunches and adult lunches and breakfast by 10 cents per year for the 2019-20 school year?
I'll second.
So, we've got a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And now, we're the discussion about the calendar.
Thank you.
Yeah, so...
Do we need one more motion, or did you come in?
I'm trying to be efficient.
Thank you.
So, we do have a calendar change that I need to bring to the attention of the board. The district, based off information that we've received, has determined that teacher absences and substitute shortages will exceed our ability to provide safe and adequate supervision and support for our students and have canceled the school day on May 8, which is this Wednesday. As a result, May 8 will become a non-school day for students and an unpaid day for teachers. This information has been communicated both internally and publicly through multiple communication channels. Schools have also posted the information on their reader boards, so we are getting out as much information as we can. We know that this change will be challenging for our families, and we are truly sorry for this inconvenience. We hope that in advance, the advanced communication last week has helped families plan their childcare and other arrangements. I also want to communicate that, because this is very important to me, that we will be serving both breakfast and lunch at all five sites on May 8 for any Central School District student. Breakfast will be served from 7:30 to 8:15, and lunch from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30. So, as the board needs to approve calendars, I'm requesting the Board of Directors approve the 2018-19 Central School District 13 amended calendar as presented.
How is it presented?
As an unpaid day and a non-contact day for students.
And are we extending the calendar?
We are not. It is... It is, because we've already extended it for the two snow days and our families have, I know several have made changes and things, this is why we are going with an unpaid day.
It's been moved. Do we hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended 2018-19 district calendar. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And we're down to comments by individual board members.
Just the only comment I would add is I would agree with the public presenter, I guess that's the right way to refer to it, in that it would be good for us to consider at some point in time a better process of communicating amongst ourselves when terms are up and when registrations are due, and when we do have an empty chair planned for a little bit ahead of time. I know I filled my position by running over to the courthouse like on the last minute after Jill Love gave me a call and said, hey, would you consider being on the school board? And we probably ought to have a more professional way of recruiting new school board members and, and just communicating that, so I would put my hand up in favor of taking a look at that as we move forward.
Anything over there?
I have something, Steve. I would like to just echo the start of our meeting and how much we appreciate our teachers. I have two boys. One has successfully graduated, the other is well on track, and I couldn't ask for a better group of teachers that have helped me raise my two boys. So I know it's not perfect, but I think overall we do a really, really good job, and I know the majority of our teachers just go above and beyond and really, really care for, for all of our kids, and I really personally really, really appreciate that. And for the parents that were helping with the, the health lessons, thank you so much for that. My, my questions might have come across a little bit critical, but I was just trying to better understand and be prepared. But I, I did recognize the process that was, was behind that, so I really, really appreciate that as well. But if there was a way we could replicate you on a lot of these different things, we would love, love to do that. And, and then with respect to next, next week's Wednesday, you know.
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday. Yes, yes, it's this week. Yeah, you know, it's, it's a tough situation in some ways, but I do, I do respect what's happening amongst the teachers and trying to get the word out for, you know, funding levels in our, in our schools. And, you know, I, I think we'll make it through. I know that there's been a lot of discussions about how to make it work, and I want to thank the superintendent and all the folks that were working through it and talking through it and, and coming up with the plan that, that we've adopted. I know for me personally, I'll, I'll do my best to try to turn it into a positive for the community. I know there are probably some parents and some that will look at it and maybe not necessarily see it that way, but we're working really hard in the district to, to be one team. And even in, in these types of situations, we need to continue to do that and, and look for the positives and look for the things that we agree on. And for me personally, I'll, I'll commit to doing that, and, and we'll get through this, and hopefully there, overall, there is a benefit to it. So, thanks.
So I want to echo Steve about all the, all the teachers. We, we have a great staff for the entire district, for all the folks that work for the district, and, and to believe that we can turn things around overnight is not something that can happen. If you read the article in the paper this weekend in the Oregonian, it was the, the folks about Measure 98 and their being very angry about the way the money for Measure 98 is being followed up. And what they don't realize is we can't make plans that will, will do those things in a year and show results. You've got to get a program developed, and that's really frustrating to me when, when people start criticizing what everybody's trying to accomplish. And we continue to have a moving target with budgets and everything else, and I encourage those people to step forward and step into the shoes of the, the district administrators. And, you know, it's just incredible that, you know, we're talking June 24th, we're potentially having a board meeting, when by law we have to have a balanced budget approved on June 30th. And if we can't get numbers to develop the budget until the first part of June, that's ridiculous, because then we're trying to make decisions without adequate information, and that's just flat, poor business.
And no, and I appreciate that, and no, please no. We are working diligently with estimated numbers in both, if it comes, if it doesn't. So we will have multiple plans already in place should that take place. So I, please know that we will be prepared to, to give you option A, option B, option C, and that may be how we will work through all of the, the budget hearings as we go through. So I appreciate that, but please know we will make sure that we, with the best of our knowledge that we have, have, you know, really good plans to you all to approve it based off of the information we have.
And just remember, those frustrations are mine, is a personal comment about sitting up here trying to, to work with these folks on, on funding. It's really, really disturbing to me that they can't get it settled. So, trust me, I've sent my fair share of texts to different senators and representatives over the last month. So, if nobody has anything further, we are adjourned.